What's Neiman here for? Huh? What's Neiman here for?
Call me this.
Oh, okay. You're back down? I'm standing. Meetings in a row. He might want to start attending every one.
Asking if he will meet. I called, went over and asked him if he would meet.
I know there's so many here tonight.
Recognize him again.
But I guess.
He said, "I just has an honor."
Things amount of the woodwork. And then they go back into the woodwork right out.
It is seven o'clock. We do have a quorum. We'll call the city council meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the invocation given by Councilman Guerina and the pledge to both the American and Texas flags given by Councilman Ferguson.
Can you rise, please? This weekend, I had the, we went to a military prayer breakfast with my state guard unit, and the chaplains there were reading prayers or doing the prayers of past presidents. And I thought, what a great idea to do that today. So today, our prayer will be the one from Thomas Jefferson at his first inaugural address in four of March eighteen oh one, Washington DC. Be bow with me, please. Almighty God, oh, one more thing. It's in old English, because it is two hundred and seven years old, so bear with me on that. Bow with me, please. Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly beseech thee that we may always prove ourselves a mindful people of thy favor and glad to do thy will. Bless our land with honorable ministry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, and from pride and ignorance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people, the multitude brought hither out of many kindreds and tongues. Endow with thy spirit of wisdom those whom in thy name we entrust to the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace at home, and that through obedience to thy law, we may show forth thy praise among the nations of the earth. In time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness, and in the day of trouble, suffer not our trust in thee to fail. All of which we ask through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance to the American and Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas of our own state, under God, one and indivisible.
I go first.
You go. I'm sorry, Julie.
That's okay.
Okay. Now, we're going to do the item C is consideration of items relating to the May twelve, two thousand twelve city Louisville general election. And the first item is canvas of the election returns for city council general election. Julie?
I'll read the results from the election. In the mayor's race, Dean Ughert received one thousand four hundred and fourteen votes, which was seventy-one point two-three percent. Winston Edmondson received five hundred and seventy-one votes, which was twenty-eight point seven-seven percent. In race, in the place number two race, R. Neil Ferguson received one thousand sixty-eight votes, and Steve Hill, I'm sorry, for fifty-five point two-six percent. And Steve Hill received eight hundred and sixty-four votes for forty-four point seven-two percent. We had a total of two thousand thirty-five voters in this election.
Okay. Next item is consideration of resolution declaring the results of the city council election. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept. Accept the, the results of the election.
I second it.
I have a motion by Councilman Guerina for a resolution declaring to accept the results of the city council election as read, and second by Councilman Vaughn. Discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Okay. Mayor Pro, Mayor Pro Tim Durham and Mr. Ferguson, if you'll join me down front, please.
Yeah, I've got two certificates of election to read. This is to certify that Dean Ughert, at the general election held in the city of Louisville, Texas, on the twelfth day of May two thousand twenty, virtue of having received the majority of the votes cast, has been elected mayor of the city of Louisville, Texas, and was on the twenty-first day of May two thousand twelve certified by canvas of the vote by the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas. Now, therefore, by reason of the provisions of the city charter and ordinances of the city of Louisville, Texas, you are hereby notified and qualified as the law directs for the set office of mayor of the city of Louisville, and therefore to enter upon the discharge of your duties in accordance with the law in such cases made and provided. Witness my hand and seal of the city of Louisville this twenty-first day of May two thousand twelve. Here's our second one. This is to certify that R. Neil Ferguson, at the general election held in the city of Louisville, Texas, on the twelfth day of May two thousand twelve, virtue of having received the majority of the votes cast, has been elected councilman, place number two, of the city of Louisville, Texas, and was on the twenty-first day of May two thousand twelve, certified by canvas of the vote by the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas. Now, therefore, by reason of the provisions of the city charter and ordinances of the city of Louisville, Texas, you are hereby notified to qualify as the law directs for the set office of councilman, place number two, of the city of Louisville, and therefore to enter upon the discharge of your duties in accordance with the law in such cases made and provided. Witness my hand and seal of the city of Louisville this twenty-first day of May two thousand twelve.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your names. You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office of the state office.
Of the city of Louisville.
Of the city of Louisville.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And I will.
And I will.
The best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, defend.
Preserve, protect, defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter and ordinances of this city.
The charter and ordinances of this city.
And I furthermore.
I furthermore.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I have not directly or indirectly.
That I have not directly or indirectly.
Paid, offered, or promised to contribute.
Paid, offered, or promised to pay.
Contributed nor promised to contribute.
Contributed nor promised to contribute.
Any money or valuable thing.
Any money or valuable thing.
Or promised any public office or employment.
Or promised any public office or employment.
As a reward.
As a reward.
For the giving or withholding a vote.
For the giving or withholding a vote.
At the election.
At the election.
At which I was elected.
At which I was elected.
For helping us.
For helping us.
We certainly thank all of you for coming tonight and like to give Councilman Ferguson a moment to say his thanks to everyone, and I'm sure he has a lot he'd like to say.
Well, first of all, I'm obviously very excited to be seated now for three years instead of a few months, so that's exciting for me. I have a lot of people to thank. I have to start with my wife for putting up with me and standing by me and being willing to support me and help me through this election, and being encouraging and being there for me. I had an incredible campaign staff. I'm not going to embarrass them by naming names, but I couldn't have asked for a more outstanding group of people to do all the different tasks that needed to be done to make this election a success. And to every one of those folks, I owe my undying thanks. And then I want to thank the voters of Louisville for having the confidence that they've placed in me to serve in this position, and I hope to return that through my service and do the job that is expected of me, and I look forward to it. I actually do enjoy this work, so it's a, it's a pleasure for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And I kind of did all a lot of that. First, I would like to give praise and glory to God for all that he's blessed me with over the years. I've had a wonderful life and had wonderful family over the years and friends. Many of you are here tonight. I appreciate it. I thank you. And most of all, I thank you for entrusting me for a second term to be your representative as mayor of your city. I promise you that my door is always open, as it always has been. I'm listed in the phone book. I got email. I got about every way you can. My door is open also to come and contact me, visit with me. Each and every one of you are just as important to the other. None of you are any different than Councilman Ferguson or myself or any of us up here. And we thank you very much for what you do for our community, and that's why we do what we do, is because we have such a good group of citizens here in our community that make this a wonderful city to live in. So I thank all of you, and I guess God blessings on each and every one of you. Thank you. We have a couple, we have a proclamation, this is a very important presentation we'll make, but first we'll do our proclamation. So if we, if I could ask David Way and Jessica Yang to come forward with me, please. Lily, and Lily Yang is with us also. You know, it's interesting, and I didn't know Councilman Guerina was going to read a prayer from a president two hundred years ago, but it's pretty ironic that we do that and then at the same time, we celebrate all the different cultures that this country is made of. As we all know, very few of us in the population of the United States today are Native Americans, but we're all made of different cultures. That's what's so awesome, but not only our city, but our country here in the United States, is that we are a country of many nations and a country of many nationalities. And because of that, when we come together, we're truly one great nation. So with that, I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas our community is strengthened by the many cultures and peoples who live in America and contribute greatly to our society, economy, and way of life, whereas over two hundred and fifty thousand Asian-Americans now reside in the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex, representing a steadily growing segment of the population of our city and cities and communities around, surrounding us. Whereas while Asian-Americans celebrate their unique and rich history, culture, and traditions, they also share values that are common throughout America, such as love of freedom, dedication to family, entrepreneurship, excellence in education, and service to the community. And whereas today, Asian-Americans have made important contributions to our city and our nation in government, business, education, science, and other fields, and because of their hard work and success, belong in some of the highest household income categories of any ethnic group. And whereas each, the President of the United States of America, joined by elected officials and leaders throughout the country, collectively issued proclamations in the month of May to recognize the importance and the richness that Asian-American communities add to the cultural fabric of our society. And whereas throughout the month of May, Asian-Americans will join together to host celebrations and educational events to honor their strong heritage, history, and culture of their ancestral homeland and their role in the future of America. Now therefore, I, Dean Ughert, mayor of the city of Louisville, Texas, along with all members of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of May two thousand twelve as Asian-American Heritage Month. Proclaim this twenty-first day of May two thousand twelve. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Honorable mayor, honorable councilperson, ladies and gentlemen, we are very honored to receive this proclamation. As a first-generation immigrant, we are very proud to be American and very proud to be a Texan and very proud of the city of Louisville. Louisville is such a beautiful city, attract a lot of Asians to move into this area. We are very glad to be in this wonderful city. We want to contribute, and we want to pay tax, we want to participate in voting, and we encourage the people to vote, and we will invite the mayor to our Asian-American Citizens Council, the annual banquet, which is on September, together with the other mayors, and we will send you an official invitation and hopeful we could see you over there and you will speak to the Asian people as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Basher, if I could ask you to please come and join me, ma'am. Joining me now is Carol Basher. She is director of Public Works, is that?
Public Services.
Public Services, Public Services. And sometimes that aren't always the most glamorous jobs that some of our team workers here in the city have, but they're some of our most thankful jobs, because when you turn that water on in the morning and you feel it coming through your shower, or when you go to flush your toilet and it works, or when you get in your car to drive down the street and you've got a nice street, or you go out for a walk in the evening, you've got nice sidewalks, Carol and her people take care of all that, plus a multitude of other things that I won't go into. But when you see these people, sometimes just give them a thank you, because sometimes, I know I do, and we probably all do, take for granted flipping on that water or flipping on that electrical switch and knowing that we don't have to worry about it. We're truly blessed during this meeting, and we thank you, Carol, for all the work you've done. And because of that, the, this is, we're celebrating National Drinking Water Week and Public Utility Awareness Week, and so here at City Louisville, we had a, we sponsored a poster contest, and I can tell you, there's some excited young people here today that did a wonderful work and did, spent a lot of time on these posters. So today, we're going to, this year's theme was Water Wonderful, Ways to Save, and we'll, we'll help promote water conservation. So we're going to go from kindergarten through fourth grade, and the posters, they've been displayed at the library, and they're here tonight to receive their awards. So do you have the awards?
I do.
She has the awards right here. So we're going to start with kindergarten and then, and through first grade group. In third place, and if you would, as you, as I call your name, if you'd come forward, and then we'll get a picture with you, and then if you'll stay up here, we'll get a group picture with, with all three of you there. Okay, we're going to start kindergarten through first grade group. In third place, we have Lily Phillips, first grade. First Lily. Hi, Lily.
She wants to show you her daughter.
Oh, I want to see it. Oh, isn't that beautiful? And can you turn around and show it to everyone else, too? Hold it up high, so everybody can see it. There you go. Isn't that nice? Certificate of Excellence, I hereby granted, is hereby granted to Lily Phillips for outstanding workmanship in the two thousand twelve National Drinking Water Week, Water Utility Awareness Week, poster contest. Here we go, Lily. Here you go. And you get that? Can you hold all that? You getting here, too? All of us. Don't need to get down further? I guess I could just get down on one knee and stay there, couldn't I? You'll step in, then we'll get a group of all of you. Okay. In second place, we have Chin Lee, first grade, pronounced Chin Lee. Congratulations. That's a beautiful poster. Can I see it? Oh, that is beautiful. Can you turn around and show it to everybody? Isn't that beautiful? Give her a big round of applause. And I won't read all these, but this is, this is hereby granted to Chin Lee. And here's your poster for second place. Isn't that beautiful? And then here's your little trophy. Beautiful. Let's get a picture real quick. Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. If you'll stay over here, then we'll get a picture, all of you together. Okay. And in first place, we have Kylie Schwab, first grade. First Kylie. Congratulations. Oh, that is beautiful. Turn around and show it up there, buddy. Hold it up high, so everybody can see it. Oh, isn't that beautiful? Here's your first-place certificate, and here's your trophy. Look right here, and we'll get a picture, okay? Okay, now let's get all three of you in here together, okay? And we'll get a group picture of all three of you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Now, in our second grade group, we have a tie for third place. Brandon Guy, second grade, and Audrey Pelis, Patsky, I'm sorry, Patel ski, maybe, second grade. How do you say your last name?
Patel ski.
Patel ski. I'm sorry, I missed it. It's good to see you. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Can y'all hold your posters up real high? Oh, wait, wait a minute, I'm sorry. What? It's what?
Braiding.
Braiding, not wearing. I'm sorry. Somebody misspelled something. Well, hold your picture up real high, so everybody can see it, okay? There you go, Braiding. Thank you so much. I apologize, Braiding. That's how it spells it. Yeah. Now, we'll come over here, we'll get a picture, come right over here. Okay, go here. Okay. If y'all stand right over here just a minute, we'll get the next ones here. In second place, we have Ree Owens, second grade. Rick Owens, I'm sorry. I apologize, Rick. You got messed up. Do you want to turn around and show everybody your picture for us? Oh, that is so good. Isn't that awesome? Here, Rick. Here you go. Here, here's your trophy. Come up here, let's, wait a minute, let's get your picture. Mom and dad are going to want that. Can you just step right over here with these other young ladies? We'll get the group picture in just a minute. Okay. And in first place, we have Allison Greed, second grade. Congratulations, Allison. Wonderful. You want to turn around, let everybody see it?
I got third.
Isn't that beautiful? Give her a big round of applause. First place, and your trophy. And then let's get a picture right here, okay? Okay, all y'all want to come in here together, we'll get a picture, all of us together, okay?
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay. And now we're going to do third and fourth grade groups, and our winners are, in third place is Sang Myong Lee, third grade. Song Myong Lee. Song, is that right?
Sang, no.
Sang, I have it right. Okay. Let's hold your picture up, show everybody how good it looks. All right. Get a picture. Get a picture. Stand over there, we'll wait just a minute. In the second place, Hannah Morris, third grade. Hi, Hannah. Congratulations, hon. That's wonderful. Can you turn around so everybody else can see it, too? Thank you. Let's come up here and get a picture. And in first place, drum roll? McKinnon O'Bannon, fourth grade. Congratulations. Go around, show that everybody. That's beautiful. Hold it up high, so everybody sees. All right. Here is your first place picture. And here's your trophy. Here, we'll get a picture. Okay, babe. We'll come in here, we'll get a picture, all of you together. There we go. Let's give them all a big round of applause. And then our final winner for grand prize winner, as you see, we had many, many great posters and a lot of great conservation tips, and you know, I saw some, it was like, one drop of water, you don't think about it, well, one drop of water, if you save that every day, how much water you're saving. When you brush your teeth, don't stand there with the water brushing, running, brushing your teeth. Turn the water, when you're shaving, don't just stand there and let the water run. Shave and then rinse it off, shave and then rinse it off. Every way we can save water helps. They gave us a lot of good ideas. This year's grand prize winner is Isabella Linner. I'm sorry, I know I messed it up. Second grade. 2nd grade. Isabella, how do you say your last name? Leonard? It's Leonard. Here's your certificate for your grand prize. Oh yeah, show everybody your poster, hon. Hold it up real high, so everybody can see it. Here's your grand prize certificate. And here's your trophy. Okay? Just turn around and get a picture, okay, hon? Let's give them all a big round of applause. Once again, we wanna thank everybody for participating, all the people participating, the parents that helped with this. And I wanna thank Carol and her team members that work with her every day too. Thank you very much.
And Mayor, since you noticed the little bracelets that all the, the poster contest entries had?
Right.
And so we wanted to give you and the council one of those as well.
Well, isn't that special? We got our own little prizes. Thank y'all very much. Thank you. Kids are precious, man. Thank you, Mayor. I had, I've been trying to make it to those. Yeah. I had, I've been trying to make it to those. Talk about it. Right there. I don't wanna have to. I don't wanna.
Bandanas you wanted.
Yeah, pretty much, ooh. Okay, next item is, uh, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.074, uh, discussion of election of Mayor Protem and Deputy Mayor Protem, we vote convene into closed session.
We'll reconvene back into regular session. Is there any action to be taken, counsel?
Mayor, I'd like to move that we continue with Councilman Durham as mayor pro tem and with Councilman Vaughn as deputy mayor pro tem.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Gilmore for Councilman Durham to be mayor pro tem and Councilman Vaughn to be deputy mayor pro tem, and that was seconded by Councilman Vaughn.
No, I didn't second it.
I'm sorry. Councilman Ferguson. I'm sorry, Councilman Ferguson seconded it. Excuse me. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is citizens' forum. At this time, any person with business before the council, not scheduled on the agenda, may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Do not have any cards filled out for anyone to speak. Next item is consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will not and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member, citizen, so requests. For city requests removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. We did have requests to pull item seven. So, Councilman Durham?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items through number six.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve consent agenda with the exception of item seven, seconded by Councilman Grinna. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven. Acknowledgement of the fiscal year 2011-2012 mid-year budget report, approval of appropriations to the Fire Service District Fund of $375,646 and the Crime Control and Prevention District Fund of $1,050,236, and approval of supplemental appropriations to the Community Activities Fund of $20,700, Grant Fund $18,284, the Fire and Police Training Fund of $12,000, 4B Sales Tax Fund of $53,793, and to the Corridor Beautiful Capital Project from available tree mitigation funding of $30,000. Mr. City Manager, would you like to expand on that for us, please, sir?
Well, the first part of this item, Mayor, is the routine mid-year budget report, which we do every year about this time, and it basically is just detailing our estimates for expenditures and, more importantly, revenues for all of the city's funds. So, this is the first look you have after you set the budget last August as to how the funds are performing, and the backup on that, I think, speaks for itself. I think, to a large extent, most of the funds are doing pretty well and in accordance with what we had planned. There's variations, as there always are, on the revenue side, but all in all, I think we're doing fairly well, especially on the two major funds, the general fund and the utility fund. The second part of this is a series of appropriations subject to development of either new budgets, which is the case in the Fire Services District and the Crime Control District. These are the two sales tax funds that were not budgeted last year because we wanted to get a full half-year, at least, of revenue projections under our belt before we confirmed what the plan was. These are adopting exactly what the plan was, so you'll see those two appropriations. And then, of course, in August, you'll be budgeting those, much like you do the rest of the funds, for next year. The remainder of these are supplemental appropriations to various funds for, either in the case of the grant fund, things like a new grant that's come along, or in the case of the 4B fund for additional expenditures that we've experienced in the area of electric utilities. There's a tree funding or a... It's the beautification fund. Comes out of a tree mitigation funding. That's for improvements to the alley structures in the Plaza project. So, again, you're just granting appropriation authority for staff to spend those funds during the course of the remainder of the fiscal year. I'll be happy to answer any more detailed questions.
Any questions, counsel? Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Did we accept the 2011-2012 mid-year budget report?
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Vaughn, and seconded by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is consideration of variance to Lewisville City Code Section 6-54 regarding engineering site plans for the proposed improvements associated with the Lewisville Rodeo Arena Grounds located at 125 Parkway Drive. At the February 20, 2012 City Council Workshop Session, staff was directed to proceed with various improvements, including new bleachers for the Lewisville Rodeo Arena Grounds. New improvements associated within the site included three new sets of bleachers accommodating approximately 2,160 seats, ADA compliant walkways within the site, as well as a long Parkway Drive, ADI compliant paved parking spaces, and various paved driveways with an on-site paved fire lane. A variance is being requested to waive the engineering site plan requirement by providing a modified engineering site plan. Recommendation that the city council approved the variance request as set forth in the caption above, and do have a speak... Not a card here spelled out by Vaughn Booker. He is here in support of the item and is here to... available to answer any questions that you might have of him. Councilman Ferguson?
Move to approve as stated.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve as presented, a seconded by Councilman Gilmore. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine. Consideration and take action on ordinance providing for the award and authorizing the issue... issuance and sale of City of Lewisville, Texas General Obligation Refunding and Improvement Bonds Series 2012, levying a tax and payment thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, a paying agent registrar agreement, and an ESCO agreement, calling certain bonds for redemption, approving the official statement, enacting other provisions relating thereto. The issuance of approximately $26,800,000 of the City of Lewisville, Texas General Obligations Refunding and Improvement Bonds Series 2012 will provide funds for refunding the remaining balance of the city's Series 2003 and 2004 General Obligation Bonds and the city's Series 2004 Certificates of Obligations, and will provide estimated new funding for $9,940,000 for the construction of improvements to the city's streets, sidewalks, and related drainage improvements, construction of a public safety training facility and related improvements, and costs associated with the issuance of the bonds. Recognition is that council approved the ordinance providing for the award and authorizing the issuance of the sale of City of Lewisville, Texas General Obligation Refunding and Improvement Bonds Series 2012, levying a tax and payment thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, a paying agent registrar agreement, and ESCO agreement, calling certain bonds for redemption, approving the official statement, and enacting other provisions relating thereto. We do have a presentation here by First Southwest. If you would just state your name and address, and pull that mic around for you there so you can get it to you. I'm sorry.
How's that? Mayor and counsel, Marty Shue with First Southwest Company. We represent the city as your financial advisor. Also have with me tonight Julie Partain with Bracewell and Giuliani. She represents the city as your bond counsel. I'm gonna hand the... It's a big folder, but I promise the presentation isn't as lengthy as it looks, or at least I'm gonna do my best to go over everything briefly. I'm sorry. They're all the same?
Some extras, anybody?
Yeah.
Anybody out there want one?
It's really the cure for insomnia, if not anything else. Tonight, we're here to go over the results of your bond sales. There were actually two series of bonds issued, general obligation refunding and improvement bonds, as well as waterworks and sewer system revenue refunding and improvement bonds. Within each of those series, there's two components, a new money piece, if you will, that will provide the city with cash, and a refunding component. And when we say refunding, we're talking about just a typical refinancing, just taking older, higher-interest-rate debt and replacing it with new, lower-interest-rate debt to produce a net savings effect. If we'll open up your booklets, we've prepared, actually, a summary of each one of the sales for you, just the very first page of the packet, but I'm gonna go into everything in a little bit more depth. And we'll start with the general obligation refunding and improvement bonds. There were actually $25.75 million of general obligation bonds sold, and the new money portion of that or the cash that the city will actually receive is about $9.9 million, $9.94 million. So, the rest of that is the refunding component of the debt. In these bonds, the final interest rate or true interest cost for these bonds that were sold today is a 2.357 percent. As you can see, that's a very favorable interest rate. We are at historical lows in terms of the market, and as a result of that, you were able to achieve some significant savings as part of the refunding component. Your total present value savings is 1.876 million, which translates to about 11.82 percent of your refunded bonds. Just to give you an idea of a threshold or benchmark, we typically don't even start recommending refunding transactions until they reach a minimum savings threshold of 3 percent. So, as you can see with that favorable interest rate, you're way over the threshold for savings. And part of the reason for these, for this great interest rate and these high savings, is the credit ratings of the city. Both Standard &amp; Poor's and Fitch affirmed the credit ratings of AAA on the city. These are the highest possible ratings that the city could have achieved. So, we can say with confidence that today's pricing gave you the lowest possible borrowing cost that you could have achieved because you had the highest credit rating. Credit ratings are much like yours or my credit ratings. When we go to mortgage a house or purchase a car, the higher your credit rating, the lower your cost of funds or your lower your borrowing rate. Same thing for the city. And I'm gonna touch on some of the key credit considerations that go into that whole process in a moment, but if we can just flip behind tab A, it's actually tab one behind tab A, which is, we're still on the general obligation bonds. We have taken the interest rate of the 2.35 percent and actually graphed it for you against the Bond Buyers Index. This is a third-party index that we use for tracking market conditions over time, historical market conditions. Right now, the current Bond Buyers Index or rate is a 3.75 percent. Your bonds actually came in fairly below that, at 2.35 percent, again attributable to the strong credit ratings and the high demand for the city's bonds. Behind tab two, we've actually included all the sources and uses and the detailed repayment schedule for you. The bonds will pay semi-annually, and the final maturity on these bonds is scheduled to occur in 2/15/2028. And most importantly, behind tab three, we've actually included the full rating reports for you, and these are great write-ups, which more or less function as a report card for the city. And I'm just gonna quote some of the things out of these reports directly because I couldn't say it any better, but the Standard &amp; Poor's, for instance, has said that the city has very strong general fund reserves coupled with significant revenue-raising flexibility. They've also highlighted the fact that the city has very manageable debt enhanced by rapid principal amortization and moderate additional debt needs. It's pretty significant to note that 75 percent of the principal that the city has outstanding is actually scheduled to be repaid within the next 10 years. So, that's a factor that also plays into these ratings. There's a moderate debt per capita, approximately $570 of direct debt per capita, and on the water and sewer system, I think it's at $540, roughly thereof. One other thing I want to mention is that the... It's fairly significant to note that there are only 26 cities in the state of Texas that actually have a AAA rating by one of the three rating agencies. So, just from that alone, you can get some idea of the impact that that AAA rating has and how proud you should be of that. Again, Fitch also highlights as part of their report that the city has significant financial flexibility as evidenced by strong fund balances, moderate tax rates, and annual transfers out of the general fund to support capital projects. I think you're gonna see, basically, the same theme between both reports of just highlighting the strong management practices of the city. If I could go ahead and just flip back and go over the water and sewer, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have over the general obligation bonds. If not, I'll just move forward to the water and sewer bonds. Hearing silence, I'm gonna continue on.
Just one quick question. Optional redemption date?
Sure. On the GO bonds, the optional redemption date is February 15 of 2022.
Okay.
So, it's a standard 10-year optional redemption. There is no cost to the city to have a 10-year standard call feature.
And as you said, 75... The way we have it planned out, now 75 percent of our debt is to be paid off in that 10-year period.
Of the principal of your debt, yes.
Of the principal, the debt, to be paid off.
It's paid off in the next 10 years. So, it's a relatively high amortization for that principal, meaning you're scheduled to pay it off rather quickly, and the rating agencies have both made mention of that in their reports and given you credit for that as part of your AAA rating.
Okay.
Your water and sewer bonds, refunding and improvement bonds, approximately $5.925 million were sold. Of that, the new money proceeds or the cash the city will receive is about $4 million. The rest is the refunding, which provided a total present value savings of $144,084. That translates to 7 percent of refunded bonds, again, well above our minimum threshold of 3 percent. The true interest cost on these bonds was a 2.366 percent. Typically, what you see with revenue bonds, revenue bonds typically carry a higher interest rate because the repayment stream for the revenue bonds is seen as being a little bit more cyclical. It's not as secure as your tax pledge. But in this case, because you have such high, strong ratings, Standard &amp; Poor's also has you at a AAA on your revenue bonds, Fitch has you at a AA plus, you'll see a very tight spread between your GO and your revenue bonds. That also should give you some indication or, if you will, just comfort in the fact that there is a high demand for your bonds out in the market, that you were able to achieve such favorable interest rates and desirable pricing. The optional redemption on these bonds is also February 15, 2022, a standard 10-year call, and we have all of the details on these bonds behind the B tab in the booklet. The first tab is, again, we've taken this interest rate and graphed it against the revenue bond index. It's the same market index, third-party market index, that we use to track market conditions over time, but this is for revenue bonds. And as I mentioned, since revenue bonds typically have higher interest rates, you'll notice those are a little bit higher in terms of the graph, and the current revenue bond index is a 4.75 percent compared to the 2.36 percent that the city actually received. Again, we have the detailed sources and uses of funds and repayment schedule behind the second tab under the B section. These bonds are also scheduled to be... Final maturity of 2/15/2028. And again, I'll just highlight the rating reports behind the third tab, what... One of the key considerations the rating agencies hone in on for revenue debt is, and they both mentioned this in their reports, is that there is good coverage of annual debt service combined with very strong liquidity. There's a very manageable and affordable capital improvement program. Fitch has even gone a step further to say that your combined service rates at about 1.5 percent of medium household income remain below their affordability threshold of 2 percent of medium household income. They also have highlighted that you have low debt with a modest capital plan. Debt levels are moderate at 548 per capita, and capital needs are manageable with limited growth pressures and limited borrowing plans. And, again, they highlight your financial performance characterized by solid debt service coverage, and management has demonstrated extensive financial and capital planning. We've seen a lot over the last few years and all of the financial volatility and everything, we've seen the rating agencies really hone in on management practices. So, to see that the city is able to maintain these ratings and you can get a direct correlation for what that means in terms of an interest rate, and you can see that on your borrowing costs. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yes, I'd like to know how were the bonds sold. Were they sold through a negotiated sale, or was there a bid for the bonds?
They were sold through a negotiated sale. There was a lead underwriter, BOSC, and there were two other underwriters, Southwest Securities, BOSC, and RBC, and they conducted pre-marketing and to go out and sell your bonds, but they actually released for a formal order period this morning and wrapped up pricing this afternoon.
Thank you. One question I have. Do you have any comparisons of other cities as far as debt and ratings and such, of cities our size or our survey cities or anything like that?
Well, we certainly do. We can put together a formal analysis. If it would be helpful for the council. One of the things that, as I mentioned before, there are only 26 cities in the state of Texas that have a AAA rating by one of the rating agencies, and your debt load plays a large part of that. They are looking at that and looking at how you manage your capital needs and your planning and everything else. So, we can certainly provide a formal analysis, or if it would be helpful to let you know in the Metroplex where you fall in terms of the actual debt loads compared to some other cities.
Well, debt loads, ratings, and comparative obligations and revenue, the whole package, you know, if you look at cities in comparison size, you know, in other words, you got a town of 300 people, it's gonna be a little bit different than what ours would be.
Absolutely.
But if you look at that and maybe get with staff and see if we can kind of put together, it doesn't necessarily have to be a formal report, but if we could do some type of report that would show a chart or something that where we relate with other municipalities, not just around us, but statewide, and maybe even could even... I don't know how much... How difficult it is, but it may not be too difficult to look at cities that are nationwide that are our comparable thing, but not to spend a whole lot of time, but just give us some kind of idea on it.
Sure, absolutely.
Would council be okay with that? Look at that?
I would like that.
Okay.
You can certainly do that.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions, committee?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Very good report. Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Grinna?
I move to approve the ordinance providing for the award of authorizing the issuance of sale of the City of Lewisville, Texas General Obligation Refunding and Improvement Bonds, as you read, including the Series 2012, levying a tax and payment thereof, that whole paragraph.
I understand.
That whole paragraph that you read.
A motion by Councilman Grinna, approve as presented.
Second.
A seconded by Councilman Ferguson. Any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, excuse me, turn... I mean, Liz, I'm sorry.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Lewisville, Texas General Obligation Refunding and Improvement Bonds Series 2012 in the aggregate principal amount of $25,750,000, levying a tax and payment thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, a paying agent registrar agreement, and an ESCO agreement, calling certain bonds for redemption, approving the official statement, and enacting other provisions relating thereto.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10 is consider and take action on an ordinance providing for the award and authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Lewisville, Texas Waterworks and Sewer System Revenue Refunding and Improvement Bonds Series 2012, providing for the security for and payment of said bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, a paying agent registrar agreement, and an ESCO agreement, calling certain bonds for redemption, approving the official statement, and enacting other provisions relating thereto. The issuance of approximately $5,960,000 of City of Lewisville, Texas Waterworks and Sewer System Revenue Refunding and Improvement Bonds Series 2012 will provide funds for refunding the city's Series 2003 revenue bonds, new funding of $4 million for water treatment plan improvements and costs associated with the issuance of the bonds. Recommendation is council approved the ordinance providing for the award and authorizing the issuance of the sale of City of Lewisville, Texas Waterworks and Sewer System Revenue Refunding and Improvement Bonds Series 2012, providing for the security for and payment of said bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, a paying agent registrar agreement, and an ESCO agreement, calling certain bonds for redemption, approving the official statement, and enacting other provisions related thereto. She just gave us the presentation on that. Anybody have any comments or questions on that?
No, sir.
Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve item 10 as written.
We have a... We have a motion by Councilman Gilmore, approve as presented, as written, and a seconded by Councilman Durham. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, authorizing the issuance and the sale of City of Lewisville, Texas Waterworks and Sewer System Revenue Refunding and Improvement Bonds Series 2012 in the aggregate principal amount of $5,925,000, providing for the security for and payment of said bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, a paying agent registrar agreement, and an ESCO agreement, calling certain bonds for redemption, approving the official statement, and enacting other provisions relating thereto.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for your award and your presentation. We appreciate it. We appreciate the work you do for us. Thank you. And you can tell Boyd and Jason that you did a much better job than they've ever done, too. Thank you. Consideration... Item 11 is consideration of approval. I'm sorry.
This is the item I'm gonna step out on.
Okay, you'll need to state that, if you would just...
All right.
Just state that you're abstaining.
Mayor, I'm abstaining from this item.
Okay. Item 11 is consideration of approval of Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Vaughn's attendance at the upcoming Public Officials Liability Workshop, June 22, 2012, in Austin, Texas. Texas Municipal League has scheduled a Public Officials Liability Workshop to be held in Austin, Texas, on June 12, 2012, June 22, 2012. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Vaughn would like to attend this event. However, it's not a conference that has been budgeted. The total cost of attending this conference is anticipated to cost approximately $655,000, and funding is available in the city council's budget. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Vaughn is requesting city council consideration to allow him to attend this conference. Recommendation is that council consider Councilman Vaughn's attending the workshop. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, if there's no discussion, I move to approve this item.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Durham, a seconded by Councilman Grinna. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, consideration of nomination for Regional Transportation Committee representation. The Regional Transportation Council of the North Texas Central Council of Government allocate seats on the council by region and city population. Lewisville is currently in a regional... Lewisville is currently in a region along with the Colony, Flower Mound, Roanoke, and Trophy Club. The regional population is 212,530 and the threshold for appointment is 106,266. The Colony, 35,590 votes, recently nominated Flower Mound and their Councilman Perry Shrag, the Colony's Councilman Perry Shrag, as alternate. No other cities have made official nominations to staff's knowledge. The current representative is Councilman Durham from our City Council. Recommendation is that Councilman nominate, Council nominee representative and alternative Councilman Durham, you want to talk on this, touch on this a bit or would you?
If you would like me to, I will. The way it works out now, everybody, all the other cities in this signed an MOU last year to rotate this over a 10-year period for each city to have it two years at a time. I don't care for that myself personally. What it does, Lewisville has 45% of the total population that this seat represents. Two of the cities have less than 10,000 in population, which means they would have less than 5%. So we got all are equalized now with one, two-year period for each city. I don't think that's the way to do it. It doesn't allow for proper representation to me and it doesn't allow for anyone to get a chance to even know what they're doing there. I've been there five years and just about to figure out what's going on, real close to it. But I would ask that, and I'm still willing to be nominee on this in case somebody doesn't vote at the, one of the other cities doesn't vote or something. I don't think it's, I don't think we'll be represented on there by myself. The other cities will try to do something, but if we're going to keep rotating a new person in every two years, we won't ever get any stability as far as the seat goes. And I think the city manager can talk if he wants to or needs to. This will change when the new census comes out in 2020. So that's the way they, that's when they do it.
Mr. King, did you have anything you wanted to add on that?
Well, the fact that they do change it periodically for a variety of reasons, I think I've actually seen them change it outside of the census rotation when they feel like there's a need to balance the region. The 10 years that it would take for the five cities to rotate is somewhat speculative. It could be that we're in a completely different group three years from now, for all we know. So that's one of the problems with a rotational system. The other one, of course, Councilman Durham mentioned, one he kind of alluded to was the experience factor, which I think is critical on this particular committee because it's dominated by the large counties and the cities within those large counties, specifically Dallas, Dallas County, and Tarrant and Fort Worth. And that's just something that you have to recognize and understand how you need to work with the other membership of the RTC to make sure that the interests of the remainder of the region are properly represented and dealt with. And it takes some skill, knowledge, and experience. So I think that, again, that's something of a problem with a two-year rotational system. But we made those arguments known to the other cities and they have a different point of view. And as they say, that is what it is. So.
When did they do the last realignment?
2010.
It was when we, I think we're in the third year, third year of this particular alignment.
This would be the third year coming up.
Yeah.
And I guess that's one of my concerns also is, and I did speak with some other city, not that a representative from one of their cities couldn't do as good a job. My concern is that is the length of time that they would be there. There's what, 50 some, 45, 50 people on this committee?
There's 43 voting jurisdictions.
43 voting jurisdictions on this RTC. And as Councilman Durham told you, just getting caught up, I mean, when you come onto a council here, just learning the goings-on and workings of your city council, even though you've been involved, I remember when I first started, even though I'd been involved in everything from chambers and boards and commission and everything, it still took me a year just to get caught up and get up to speed of everything. You can imagine what it takes to get going on RTC and then it takes at least a year or more just to kind of figure out how things going. They don't meet as often as we do, meet once a month, I think.
Yes.
Councilman Durham, meet once a month. And so you don't have that opportunity to build the rapport and the relationships with the other members and for that short a time. And then once you get there and you start building that rapport and relationships with people so that you can try to get things done for your area, for your district, as City Manager King referenced, sometimes the larger cities, because they have much higher vote because of the population, tend to rule on some of the issues. So it's important, I think, that we build those relationships. That's my concern with the 10-year bill. And like you said, we may be, they may be redistricted out of their deal here in the next year or two, so that MOU would be null and void then at that point, I guess. My thought would be go ahead and recommend Councilman Durham to continue. He's done an excellent job. He's attended every single meeting, I think, and I think he missed one.
Missed, yeah.
And has always, as I'm sure all of you are aware, but he does it not only to us, but he does it to all the other cities that we're in with, sent a detailed explanation of the minutes of the meetings and what transpired during the meetings, and has always invited anyone to call him, meet with him, talk with him about the things that are going on. And as of this day, I don't leave anybody's contact. Do you?
There have been a few on that.
Have there? Okay.
And even previous cities that we've been in groups with.
Okay.
So we deal with.
Some have done it, but you've always been able to get with them and meet with them.
Yeah.
So that's my concern. May I ask any other comments? Motion?
I'm going to make a motion to approve Councilman Durham as our representative to the RTC.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ferris to recommend Councilman Durham as our representative, and a second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Braden reports. Nika?
Mayor?
Bob? Whoops, I messed up.
Did you want to nominate an alternate also to that board?
Yes. Okay, we need to go back and nominate an alternate to that board. Councilman Durham, do you have a recommendation for an alternate?
Um.
I believe your alternate right now is a gentleman from the Colony, but he's no longer eligible because he didn't re-up for election.
Right. He decided not to run again.
He decided not to.
I have no problem with taking the Colony representative on, that the Colony represent that they mentioned.
Perry Shrag?
Perry Shrag.
As alternate? Okay. Could make that as a motion?
I'll make a motion to have Perry Shrag as the alternate. He's a good man. I know him personally. Good man.
Have a second?
Second, Mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry. Councilman Grinna nominated Perry Shrag as the alternate, second by Councilman Vaughn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Julie. Sorry I missed that. Okay, now we're to, now we're to reports. Nika? I'll ask you again. Thought maybe something came up during the interim there. Bob? We're always hoping for, you know, economic development. I wasn't sure if somebody may have called. Chief?
No, sir.
Linda?
Just a reminder, we have our city picnic this Friday out at Lake Park and we would love for you guys to come if you can make it. We'll start at 11:30. We have, we will be giving our awards for 510, 1520, 2530, and 35 Mr. Tittle at the picnic at noon. So we'd love to have you join us.
35 means you can't retire for 10 more years, Chief.
See what I can do.
I, it's a great picnic. I encourage all of you to go if you can. I unfortunately will not be there. I'm heading down to Austin for our granddaughter's graduation, so that has, I'm sorry, has to take precedent.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Well, thank you. High school graduation, yes. Trying to get personal here?
No.
Chief?
Yes, Mayor, just to remind everybody that we are beginning today through June 3rd participating in the Click It or Ticket campaign that is done statewide, particularly around the holidays, in this case Memorial Weekend coming up. I remind everybody to be sure and buckle up out there and we'll be there to gently remind you.
It does save lives, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Carol? He didn't try to upstage you this time, did he?
No, we discussed that. No, we, we're doing okay, even though it's, we haven't had any rain, we're just about a foot low in the lake, so that's misleading as to for that we are still in a drought. But I also wanted to thank you for your participation with our kids. There were several of the parents stopped me back there and thought it was a very nice thing and that the kids were excited just to get to take a picture with the mayor and that kind of trumped the awards, but they did have a wonderful time. They wanted me to be sure and tell you that.
Well, thank you and thank you for all that you and your team members do in our fire great city. And sometimes you don't get the kudos and thanks that you should, but we do greatly appreciate everything you do. And if you'll pass that on also with your team members, I appreciate it. Donna? Pfeffer? It's good to see you here tonight, sir. Mr. Ferris?
Hello, Mayor.
Mr. Backus? Councilman Durham?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Gilmore? I'm sorry, I'm sitting here looking at you. Councilman Grinna up.
Nothing.
I'm sorry, I'm sitting here looking at you. Councilman Gilmore?
I have one. The library's summer reading kickoff celebration starts on June 2nd. It's a great way to keep your kids entertained and keep them from sliding backwards over the summertime. And by the way, they've also got one for adults, so I'd encourage you to check out the library on June 2nd and more information is on the city website.
Mr. King?
No, sir.
Mr. Ferris?
Well, I usually have a report for the MCL Grand, but my iPad refuses to open it, so the only thing I can recall, because I'm a big fan of this performer anyway, is that Betty Sue will be at the Grand this Saturday. And for those who have never seen Betty Sue, she's going to be a headliner at the Kerrville Folk Festival this year. She's getting literally an international reputation, so don't underestimate this show. I think you'll have a great time and I encourage you to go. I wish I had some other MCL Grand items, but I'll have to find out what's happening with the technology first. So Ms. Barron, do you have anything?
That is the most important one.
That's the most important one. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I'd just like to say that upon talking to members of the Fire Department, I guess this past week they had the Pipes and Drum Honor Guard Session and that it was a complete success. I was informed that they even had to turn down contestants in this ceremony, that all the hotels were full and booked up, that they even had to send them to other surrounding accommodations. And the other thing that I'd like to say is that there's an open invitation for a special screening tomorrow, free of charge, for the movie You In and Me. And this will be coming out, I'm told, in the next month or so, but the producer, author, and whatever are going to have a question and answer tomorrow at 7 o'clock in Dallas and it's open to the public. If you'd like any information on it, please just let me know. That's it, ma'am.
Thank you. Counselor? Julie? Uh, as Councilman Vaughn mentioned, the Pipe and Drum Corps and Honor Guard was just a terrific event. It was a three-day event, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. It was just full of good times had by all, a lot of hard work done. They said when everybody left, the pipers, I get it right, the pipers' lips were just numb and quivering because they'd been playing so much. The drum guys, they couldn't hardly, their hands were just like limp because they'd been playing so much. But it was wonderful to see them here. Our only problem we got with that is we're going to have to figure out how to get a bigger space. I don't know, tennet or something out there, but.
I will tell you, the group that performed in front of City Hall on Thursday night also appreciated the fact that you got up there and led them in a song too. You did a wonderful job doing that. And I think it is on video. I don't know if it's hit YouTube yet, but you did a great job, I believe.
I appreciate them, encouraged me to get up there and do that. I did enjoy it. I really didn't know what I was doing, but I did enjoy it. It was pretty awesome. So we look forward to coming back and that was partly one of the neatest things about was so many of them did come up to me and asked us, we're already coming back next year. Be sure you have it again next year. So we're excited about that. Y'all do a great job with that. Again, as we mentioned earlier, we want to thank everybody for coming out and voting. And I didn't say it earlier, I got a little emotional, but I did want to especially thank my wife, my kids, my mother, and my father that's looking down on us and I appreciate all that they've done for me through my life.
And I have to say that earlier I omitted my daughter in my thanks and unfortunately she's left, but at least it's on video now.
That's right.
And Mayor?
Yes.
On that note there, if Julie would just talk about the current voting that's going on now?
Just a reminder, tomorrow's the last day for early voting for the May 29th primary. You can vote early at municipal annex. Election day is May 29th and you'll need to vote in your specific polling location for your precinct. And it's all available on the Dent County website or you can call our office and we'll be more than happy to help you out.
What are those times tomorrow, Julie?
7 to 7.
7 to 7. Thank you.
Are you sure it's not, it doesn't go through Friday? 25th?
I don't think this one.
Okay. I must be, I thought I saw 25th somewhere. All right.
Okay. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Sections 551.071, Constellation with Attorney on Litigation, City Lewisville versus Robert C. Dahl Revocable Living Trust and Robert C. Dahl Denton County Probate Court, and Section 551.072, Property Acquisition, Section 551.087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, we will now convene into closed session.